Okay, great. I'd like to welcome everyone to the March 12th zoning board hearing. Before we get into some general business, we're taking a look at the calendar and it looks like our next scheduled hearing, pending any changes, will be on April 9th. Please note when you start planning your additional calendars that although it doesn't really affect us much, it affects other departments. We'll probably be changing the July and August meeting schedules. Probably go towards the, probably that third week of the month, so that I believe the rest of the departments will be meeting once a month. We meet once a month anyways. However, some departments do meet twice a month, which will be changed to the summer schedule. Any members of the board have anything under general business to discuss? Tonight, we have two hearings. Is Leah Reynolds here?
Yes.
All right, Leah, why don't you and your party please come up and sit at the front, please? You'll be going off in a couple of minutes. Give me time to read everything and review. As far as what's going to be on this panel, it will be, we have five? We have the full five members here? One, two, three, four, five. Okay, so it'll be a full, full five board members. Okay, those of you that missed, any members that must have missed the last hearing, Kelly passed out the updated zoning regulations from the, any changes that were occurred and that were amended into the last town meeting? So please make sure you have the current copies and then, if you would, would you add them in the book? So that you can reference them and throw out the old. We're back into the new.
If anybody needs a copy, let me know.
Yeah, does everybody have it? I believe we got them to everybody. Okay. Joe, you have your current copy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. I'm all set too. Okay. That being close to 7:05, I will call the first hearing. Again, on this panel will be the full five members, full-time members, and of course, the alternates are allowed to comment and discuss as well. I'll read the hearing notice. This is on the application of Leah Reynolds of 21 Cornell Drive, Milford, for a special permit pursuant to section 2.3 of the zoning bylaw in relation to a 12,000 square foot more or less parcel of land located on the southerly side of Cornell Drive, known and numbered as 21 Cornell Drive. Special permit sought pursuant to section 2.3 of the bylaw to admit the application to keep at our 21 Cornell Drive premises one residential animal, being a micro teacup pig as a family pet?
That's correct, yes.
Micro teacup?
Yes.
Does it look like a teacup?
It's, it actually fits in a teacup when you're first born.
Let me read the applicant's information. Basically, on the question from the, from the application, explain the reason you assert the special permit to sought in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw. The applicant states they're seeking special permit to have a teacup micro pig. The animal in question would be an indoor-only house pet. Concerning, explain the reasons you assert that the proposed use of the premises will not create undue traffic or congestion. There was no necessary answer on that. And also concerning the proposed use of the premises will not cause harm to the neighborhood or create a nuisance or hazard effect on the health, safety, and general welfare of the public, the applicant states no. This was, it is a public hearing, and from that public hearing, the Planning Board reviewed this petition approximately on February 17th and recommends the following. Favorable letter be recommended, see Town Planner Letter. And the Town Planner Letter indicates the applicant requests a ZBA special permit to allow for the keeping of a small pig as an indoor family pet. And our ZBA section 2.3 allows for the keeping of the residential animals as an accessory uses in a residential zone provided a special permit is first obtained from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Therefore, he did recommend and forward to the Zoning Board of Appeals a favorable action relating to the special permit conditions can be met. With that, Leah, why don't you tell us what you're doing?
Well, basically, I want to adopt a little miniature pig. He's probably about this big. Will probably get to be about 40 pounds full grown, which is about three years down the line. They don't reach their full growth potential until they're about three years old, about the size of a medium dog, around the size of a cocker spaniel. I do have some information if you would like me to present you with that, so that you know.
Pass it around, sure. We'd love to have it.
It should hopefully be a copy.
And I have in the file, is this similar to the stuff that you've given me here in the file?
It should be fairly similar, although I didn't provide that information, so.
Thank you.
So on the front cover, you'll see what a teacup pig looks like, the size of a teacup pig. In the upper left-hand corner on the front page is the pig in question.
I'm sorry, the upper what?
On the first page where the pictures are, in the upper left-hand corner, that's the pig in question.
The camera wants to zoom in. This is, this is a picture of the teacup pig, and this is the little pet in the corner over here. Okay? And this isn't, you're adopting, you're adopting this?
I would be adopting him, yes.
And how old?
He is eight weeks right now.
Eight weeks?
Yes.
Okay. What I'll do is I'll turn it over to the board members for comments before I open it up to the public. Maybe there'll be some answers to the public that we could answer that wouldn't have to be repetitive. So with that, Mark, I'll start. Your end of the table.
Did you name him yet?
Yes. God willing, it's going to be pork chop.
Hope it stays that way.
Yes.
You think it's going to be about 40 pounds?
Full grown, he should be 40 pounds, as long as he is kept on a strict diet, yes.
Get a little dealer?
Yes.
This other information we have says he can go up to be 200 pounds.
That's for a regular-sized pot-bellied pig. These are called miniature pot-bellied pigs. So there's a lot of speculation about it, but...
Those are scrupulous people out there who breed these also.
Yes. The parents of the pig in question are between 30 and 35 pounds.
Okay.
So usually, you have to go by what the parents determine that determines.
Why, did they work on that?
I don't have it yet, but it will be sent if it's a pig.
Basically, the pig's certified?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm all set.
You're all set?
Yeah.
Okay. Done?
No, no questions.
Mary?
I'm set for now.
Joe?
No, no questions.
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Why is, is there any concern with these type of animals? You know, there was some written here, I mean, they stay in the house or they go outside? They...
They could technically go outside. If you bring them outside on a harness or leash, they can be trained to go outside, just as a normal dog would. However, being a pig, you have to obviously be with that animal at all times due to different situations. But they can go outside, they can go to the bathroom outside, just like a regular dog if you train them that way. Obviously, he'd be going on car rides, so yes, he would be going outside from the house to the car, but he wouldn't be outside unattended.
And what would happen if he got loose? Just say with, through no fault of yours, but something happened, you know? Is there any problem with that or for anybody or yourself?
There shouldn't be. Hopefully, if I get him, he will be microchipped, so if he does get lost for whatever reason, he will be hopefully easily found.
And why this animal versus, say, a dog or a cat?
Myself and my, my three-year-old son are highly allergic to dogs.
Okay.
So we cannot have dogs in the house.
All right, so that's a good answer. Thank you.
And I might as well just read a few of the micro teacup pig facts based on the information that was provided. Micro pigs are, well, other pigs are extremely smart animals. They rank in the top five. They learn very quickly. Piglets learn their names within the two or three weeks and can also learn tricks faster than dogs. Contrary to beliefs, pigs are very clean animals. Micro pigs are trained to use the litter box. They do not have sweat glands, so they cannot sweat, making them pretty odorless. Pigs do not pick up fleas like dogs or cats, and pigs can be trained to walk on a harness or leash, just as you would a dog. Pigs are considered hyalogenic, which makes them a great alternative to dogs and cats because they do not shed. Pigs are generally quieter than a dog. They occasionally squeak or grunt when being picked up. And pigs have a long lifespan, approximately 10 to 15 years. Pigs have gentle and docile dispositions. They have a great temperament and are very rarely aggressive. Pigs are also playful animals. They play with toys such as balls and baby toys, just like dogs do. Pigs are considered low maintenance and often only require an annual vet visit. They get yearly vaccinations at that time. Pigs are social creatures and will form bonds with family members and other pets as easily. Full-grown micro teacup pig will grow to be an average of 25 to 40 pounds and approximately the size of a medium-sized dog. They do not reach their full growth potential until about three years of age. Other breeds of pigs can weigh over 150 pounds, but micro pigs are a lot smaller in size. With the information that the homeowner has provided, she's provided pictures in the packet, which they have a back deck, and it appears to be fenced enclosed, along with pictures of what they're looking to adopt. So with that, currently, right now, I'll turn it over to anybody in the public that would like to speak. Please address your questions through the chairman, and we'll address those answers through the chair. Yes, please, come up, stand, stand up and give us your name, please.
I'm Ashley Howland, 15, 405. My mom, she lives there.
Okay.
I just have a couple of questions. What I researched on the internet is that basically they're saying there's...
We've got to get your microphone.
Basically, what I have researched on the internet, and you can help answer maybe some of the questions that I have, that there's really no such thing as a teacup pig, that they really need to be outdoors and they need to roam. If they're inside, they get bored and rambunctious. My mom has an eight-pound little Yorkie, couple houses away, just kind of curious on, you know, what do you say about something like that?
Okay, would you address, you can address those answers right through the chair, please.
Sure. Well, the pig would be kept indoors, so he wouldn't necessarily be able to get out unless he is on a leash. So I would prefer him not to have a lot of contact with other animals on the, in the neighborhood until he is familiar with us and all that. It could go either way. There's a lot of things they say on the internet that could be positive, and there are a lot of things on the internet that could be negative. So it's just a matter of who you get the pig through.
Similar to any breeder of a, of an animal?
Yes, it could happen with a dog. You could get a dog that's not exactly what you're looking for either. It's just one of those things.
Okay. You have a question?
Do you plan on breeding the pig?
No.
Because they can breed at three months of age.
It will be one single pig.
You'll have it neutered or spayed?
He will be neutered, hopefully prior to coming to me. If not, he will be neutered right away.
Why is what, what I had printed on the internet, they basically say that there is no such thing as a teacup pig, that that's a fabrication.
It is, the name, I guess you could say, might be. They really technically call it a miniature pot-bellied pig, but they call it a teacup pig.
With that said, pot-bellied pigs get to be about 600 pounds.
Oh, normal-sized pot-bellied pig, yes. A miniature pig are bred so that they are smaller.
I just, I grew up in that neighborhood. The yards are very small. I don't think it's feasible for a pig. I don't think there's enough room.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Okay, you have the last word before we close the hearing and take it under advisement.
Well, I hope that everybody can look through the information that I provided and hopefully you can make a choice based upon that. I will take good care of them.
Great, okay, we'll close the hearing. Board members, would you like to vote on this now?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so I have a motion by, by, by Pines. Are there any conditions you want to put on? One or two, three-year-type situation? What would you like?
I would, recommendation I would say is readdress it a one year and see the growth of this particular pig. Pork chop, I should say. And if all of a sudden it's up to 60, 70 pounds in one year, or 80 pounds, then we know, it may be a future situation.
Right, you can't vote on this. You can discuss it, but can't vote.
Discuss that.
John?
I like what Mark said. I'd like to...
What a condition?
Yep. Because I, I'm reading stuff here, and depending on what you read, one says one thing and another one says exactly the opposite, so somewhere in the middle's the truth. And it seems to me, it's like any animal you have, if you feed them, they'll get big.
Right, that's why they have to be on a very strict diet.
Yeah, and you know what? Just to keep things in check, I think, to come back in a year, I think that's a good idea.
Okay, Joe? There, there, there's a motion and Mary's suggestion that we allow the special permit for one year, and she would have to come back to renew that, which gives a good time, probably gives all parties a good indication that how everything is progressing.
And also the neighbors as well.
We did this, we did this with someone else, too, I believe. I think we did it with some chickens?
The chickens, yeah.
Yeah, the chickens. And by the way, the chickens are gone.
Yeah.
Because it didn't work out. Okay.
Are you taking a vote or...
Yeah. So all those in favor with that condition signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those yells, all right, that's unanimous. Congratulations. You'll have the stipulation for one year. After one year or try, before that, you're going to have to come back and you're going to have to extend that special permit.
Okay.
Kind of gives you a trial and error period to see maybe if you like what you're getting into, and I think it gives the neighbors some, some teeth to be able to see how everything is going to work out and work through. Once the decision is rendered, town council will send you out a letter. You have a 20, there's a 20-day appeal period. Anybody can come in that can certainly appeal that decision that we've made tonight, okay?
Okay.
Otherwise, congratulations and good luck.
Very much.
Good luck. Okay. One down. Okay, that being after 7:10. This is a, this hearing is on the appeal of O'Reilly Auto Enterprises LLC of 233 South Patterson Springfield, Missouri, from a decision of the Milford Planning Board in relation to a property located 150 East Main Street, Milford. The decision is being appealed, is a decision rendered on or about February 17th by the Milford Planning Board in an application for a site plan approval pursuant to section 1.1.5 of the zoning bylaws, by which the decision of the planning board denied an amendment to a previously approved site plan for the subject property. Attorney Antonellis is here on behalf of the applicant. I believe the chairman of the planning board is also here tonight.
Just a member, maybe.
Okay. Just a member, please. And then, this is a letter that was sent over to Amy in East Town Clerk on the appeal. We do have a letter from town council in the file that I can reference when we need it in the file. I also have a letter from Lina McCarthy, Vice Chairman of the Milford Planning Board. Let me read this into the record, so we have it prior to getting into the actual appeal. The applicant is appealing the planning board's denial of a site plan for the subject property. In granting variances for this site, the zoning board at its 61214 meeting also took the unusual action of prohibiting the southerly driveway onto Hamilton Avenue and limited the northerly driveway onto Hamilton Ave to a one-way entrance only. That decision precipitated the planning board's denial of the site plan at their, at their meeting of 313. In denying the site plan, the planning board expressed numerous concerns regarding traffic safety and neighborhood impacts associated with the driveway restrictions, including the following. The safety of the vehicles exiting the front parking lot will be decreased if the Hamilton Ave driveway is closed, as all exiting vehicles will now be forced to use the Free Street driveway. This will adversely affect traffic safety on Free Street by significantly increasing the vehicles using this driveway. Since Hamilton Street is one-way north, whatever portion of existing strips that would have otherwise used Hamilton Ave, we will now be added to the northbound trips on Free Street. In order to access Florence Street eastbound and route back to Hamilton Street, if the intention of the driveway closure was to prevent northbound traffic on Hamilton Street, that goal will not be achieved. Closure of the front Hamilton Avenue driveway will increase, will create adverse impacts to East Main Street traffic by doubling the number of entry vehicles now forced to use the Free Street intersection. Hamilton and Free Street are approximately the same width, so concentrating all of the traffic from the parking lot will cause an undue burden on the Free Street neighborhood. In addition to the narrow pavement, there is an on-street parking on Free Street located closer to the site than on Hamilton. Site access and traffic circulation was originally designed to prevent access directly from East Main Street, given the, the close proximity of the two intersecting streets. Mr. Antonellis has got his, his information submitted in here, which he will go over, and the zoning board decision is attached to the appeal, which we had issued. And then also into the file, I did receive communications from the Milford Police Department, which although late and not in time to even get to the planning board, I will pass this on and read this letter into the file as well. And Mr. Antonellis, I'll provide you a copy if you need it. It's just basically for the file. This is addressed to zoning board of Pierce Chairman David Consigli. Thank you for taking the time to discuss with me the request of a business that wants to locate East Main Street between Hamilton Street and Free Street in their proposal to have an ingress and egress curb cut on East Main Street, Free Street, and Hamilton Street. I do not have any issues with a curb cut on East Main Street or Free Street. I do, however, have concerns with egress, ingress and egress curb cut on Hamilton Street because I believe that it will result in public safety concerns for the following reasons. Hamilton Street is a one-way street northerly from East Main Street to Cedar. Hamilton Street is a narrow roadway with line-of-sight issues on, at both the East Main Street and Cedar Street intersections. Hamilton Street serves as a cut-through street from East Main Street to Cedar and cannot handle such an arrangement in both directions. Hamilton Street is also a residential neighborhood. A curb cut is implemented in this fashion, I believe that there will be a significant number of motorists who will travel against the one-way prohibition rather than travel through the Hamilton Street neighborhood to Cedar Street. If a decision is made to allow a curb cut on Hamilton Street, I would recommend that it be designed in a fashion that the motorists would compel to travel along the one-way northerly side on Hamilton Street. If you have any questions, please contact me. I have supplied tonight a letter to a member of the planning board who was present as well. And, and just to make a, a general comment to the board members, town council has clearly had a conversation with me concerning this matter and how we need to approach it. Tonight, we cannot amend the decision, and we cannot alter the decision as currently rendered. We'll be voting tonight to either, you know, provide a, a nay or a yay based on this appeal, or it can be, it can be then retabled and it could come back as an amend, as amendment. So I'm sure we'll have some comments from the attorney representing O'Reilly. I'm sure we'll have some comments from chairman of the, or the member of the planning board. So why don't we let those comments start to filter? Joe, why don't you please give us an idea on the appeal and go over this with the zoning board and get us up to snuff on what kind of happened?
Thank you. For the record, Joseph Antonellis' office here in Milford. With me tonight is Josh Schwerling, who is the project engineer, and you may all recall Josh was here before your board back in June where this process starts. So I represent O'Reilly Auto Parts, O'Reilly Enterprises, and I was brought into this scenario quite late in the process, but it began here at the zoning board when O'Reilly reviewed the site and sought some zoning relief from this board, specifically relief as to where to locate the building. They sought some other relief that was probably inappropriate, and I think the board let them know that. I had the opportunity to watch the tape specifically for the purpose of finding out what the process was with this board relative to the plan. So the variance was granted, and the variance was conditioned, and those conditions, specifically condition number six, is the one that we should focus on tonight. And that's the condition in your decision, which I've attached to my petition, and you specifically in that decision made a determination that the access points that were shown on the plan that was presented to you by the applicant that night were not appropriate. Those access points showed entrances in and out on Hamilton Street in two places and in and out on Free Street in two places. This board chose to recommend and in fact condition the grant of the variance on a ruling that the Hamilton Street front entrance, the East Main Street entrance, be eliminated and that the Hamilton Street rear entrance be one-way in only, thereby prohibiting traffic from leaving this site onto Hamilton Street. I want to re, point out for the record, notwithstanding what all of the letters say, the only prohibition that has occurred, the only prohibition that has occurred as a result of your decision is the inability for cars to exit onto Hamilton Street. What your board did was make a determination that night as you reviewed the petition, which is your obligation, based on the safety, health, and welfare of the inhabitants of the town of Milford, which is set forth in the bylaw, you made a decision, you did not believe that the front entrance on Hamilton Street was appropriate, nor did you believe that a left-out was appropriate. My client accepted that decision, chose not to appeal it, chose not to amend it, deemed that the board knew exactly what it wanted for this particular piece of property, and closed on the property, purchased it, and then created a site plan, which is required under the Milford zoning bylaw. Whenever you build a structure, this board knows this well, or add parking spaces to a parcel property, you're required to go to the planning board. Planning board's jurisdiction is to review the site plan, to make certain that it complies with the zoning, to make certain that it provides safe and adequate access, make certain that the drainage is correct, that the building is correct, that the pavement is correct, and a variety of other things. At the zoning board hearing, excuse me, at the planning board hearing, which took place a couple of months ago, the planning board strongly objected to the plan that was brought in, and by the way, again, the plan that was brought to the planning board was the plan that was created after the zoning board hearing. So my client went into the planning board with a plan that this board had approved. It included all of your zoning board recommendations. It had to, because in order to file the application with the planning board, it had to comply with the regulations that had been imposed on the property, which were lawfully imposed by this board. So we walked to the planning board, and at the planning board, we hit a roadblock. This is not meant to be a criticism of, of the planning board. My presentation is simply to provide you with a history of what's happened. At the planning board, the planning board expressed its displeasure with the condition that the zoning board had imposed. At that point, I came involved, and the first thing I did was ask Josh and my client if there were any deficiencies in the site plan, other than the fact that the plan did not have the exits and entrances in the spots that the planning board desired. The response was there were some minor deficiencies, and that my recommendation, those deficiencies were eliminated, and the plan that was resubmitted to the planning board by Josh is, by, by Bowler Engineering, complies to the rules and regulations of the site plan review standards in the town of Milford.
You have a copy of that, Joe?
That plan is, is there.
And I can't see it that clearly.
I apologize. Again, this... Again, this plan is a layout that specifically encapsulates all of the conditions set forth by your board on the property. That site plan, but for the entrances, conforms and complies with the Milford site plan rules and regulations. The planning board chose to deny the plan. Their denial of the plan places my client in one position only. We have a unique bylaw in the town of Milford, and I've been practicing for 30 years here in Milford, and this is only the second time in those 30 years that I've been before the zoning board on an appeal of a decision from the planning board. The first time was when a client, when a neighbor appealed the site plan and it had to come to the plant, zoning board. And the second time is tonight. And tonight is the first time that I've ever taken an appeal of a decision of the planning board, and I believe it's probably the first time that this type of petition has been before your board. I agree with Mr. Moody's conclusions. I discussed them with Jerry earlier. I believe that your role tonight is very simple. Your role tonight is determine whether or not the safety standards that you perceive to be appropriate for this property should be upheld. If you believe that your safety standards that you put into effect for this piece of property are not correct, then your choice would be to uphold the planning board and agree with them that their decisions on safety are more important or better reasoned than yours. Now, I watched your meeting. Again, I wasn't there, but I watched it. There was a significant amount of discussion between you as board members as to how best to develop the property. Had you not considered it at all, I might not be here feeling as strongly about my case as I do. But again, I watched that meeting and you all talked during that meeting about how you thought traffic was best handled on this site. I think you made a well-reasoned and informed decision, and I believe that my client has complied with and conformed with each and every aspect of your decision. I think therefore that you have the absolute right to uphold your decision, thereby overturning the planning board's denial, which would allow my client to move forward and construct the building on that property by way of that plan, the very plan that you approved at the zoning board hearing in June of nine, of 2014, albeit with the exception that in addition to your conditions, my client has imposed the other standard conditions set forth in the site plan ru, rules and regulations in Milford. I'm here and Josh is here to answer any specific questions about the plan. I recognize that Mr. Caligoni, who is a longstanding member of the planning board, is here. I'm certain he has some thoughts that he'd like to share with you, and I think it would be great that we could all discuss it. But from a position of, of, of representing my client, I believe that the decision that you have made, that you reasoned out in June, is a decision that could be upheld. My client has relied on that decision and spent his money and resources to create a plan that conforms to your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. In a minute, I'm going to show the, uh, the public what, what the plan was and what it will be in front of the public is what the zoning board worked very hard to try and work out. And as, and as far as the way we have discussed this particular site, it was more about life safety. And just in the last two or three weeks, I have seen cars, even now, and nothing's developed there, coming down that one-way out of a parking lot that is going to be this site down Hamilton Street. It is a site that needs the restriction. All the engineering reports in the world can't affect what the right thing should be do. The planning board and the zoning board, we have no issues together collectively. We, we are two different boards on two different aspects of what we do together and we try to work together. Any decision we make is independent of what they make. We understand the reason sometimes they make their decisions, even though we may not like them, and vice versa. So no one is going to sit here and lambast any member of that committee. Quite frankly, I think we all honor what they do every two, every second Tuesday of each month, and they put a lot of hard work and effort and a lot of thought processes into trying to make this community safe and to make things flow easier. This particular site, clearly based on the vote that this board has taken, was a life safety issue. When this started to come up, I did reach out in a discussion that the, actually the police chief, I think, may have read, and then I reached out to him and asked his opinion. I have this in the file. I will supply that to Attorney Antonellis. As you can see, the issue is nothing that has to do with this board in a conflict with the planning board. And I want to make that clear because it, it seems to be a perception out there that there is, and there really isn't. We're an independent board, we're an appointed board, we're here on behalf of the community. We're not in a paid position or a paid role. Everything is donated through this board and our company. Saying that, what I'll do is I'll turn, and again, based on some of the additional information you have, if any other board members would like to discuss or talk about this further, we can only deal with the decisions we have in front of us. We're not looking to amend anything. We have no authority to amend anything tonight. This is on strictly the appeal. Once we, the board members have something to say or don't have something to say, I'll push it over to the public and then we can make a determination and provide a vote. With that, Charlie, I'll start on your end.
Attorney Antonellis, what was this specific problem, and maybe it was read when we got the, but I didn't catch on it, that the planning board did not like what you submitted?
Planning board, to the best of my knowledge, wanted there to be two access points on Hamilton Street, at least one of which would have allowed for traffic to leave the facility and turn left on Hamilton Street. And they wanted two spots in. So it was going to be, uh, uh, let's, let's call it an East Main Street side entrance and then a rear entrance. And at least one of those would have allowed for a left-hand turn out. And the, the decision of this board had been that to be a, a one entrance on Hamilton Street at the rear of the property solely for access and not for egress, for legal.
And then Free Street has both?
Free Street had both.
Ingress and the egress.
That's correct.
And nothing on East Main Street?
Nothing on East Main Street. The decision, I believe, from both boards was that East Main Street did not make sense.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Joe?
I'd like to take a look at the... Now, you have a parking area in front and to the rear of the building.
Correct.
Correct parking area. Now, is there egress?
No, just, just an entrance way down on the, on the back. That's it, on Hamilton.
On Hamilton.
Yeah, not out. That's what we approved.
All right, just coming in here.
Yes.
All right, nothing over in here. No. Let me see. So in other words, you have entrance and exit to the parking lot in the front.
Yep.
On Free.
On Free.
Correct.
And entrance?
Entrance here.
And exit on both sides at the back.
Correct.
Not on Hamilton.
No.
No, sorry, entrance only on Hamilton.
Only on Hamilton.
Nobody can come out of here onto Hamilton Street anywhere along, Joe. That's what we approved.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Yeah.
All right, you can only come in off of Hamilton Street in the back. They can come in and out on Free Street in both the front and the back.
Yep.
Yep, correct.
Correct, all right.
Good. There were, I don't, I don't mean to interrupt you, Mr., Mr. Evans, but there were no changes to the design from the point where it left this board in June till the point where it was denied.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Their objection basically, or was what, there was no egress on Hamilton Street?
Correct. And, and again, I, I know that Mr. Caligoni's here and he was very involved in the decision, but my memory is, and certainly he can correct me, is that I believe the planning board thought that there should be a left-hand turn out onto Hamilton Street as well as a turn in.
Okay, for, just for clarification to the public, um, the building sits in this middle of the site. The, I believe the original plan, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is Hamilton Street, which is one-way heading north. The original plan called for traffic to come in and to come out on Hamilton Street, effectively risking a, coming this way on a one-way street on East Main. This is the, this plan was generated by the ZBA decision that we have done. We have blocked this totally with landscaping and there's only a rear, an entrance to the rear, enter only on Hamilton. And then they have enter and exit in two different areas, and there's no additional entrance on East Main Street up here. And apparently, maybe because the two streets was just too close to try and do a main entrance here. So this is the plan that the zoning board conditioned, and that's why I just want to kind of make it clear. So I have no additional comments, but go ahead, Mr. Evans.
Okay, and I remember, I recall at the time, we thought that we, that we, we would keep the traffic coming in if they made deliveries. That's why we have the entrance so far back, and it was more for delivery of parts or whatever, and that's why it's always a one-way. And they could access, it's a very small piece, a very small piece of, of property that we didn't feel it needed, needed. We felt that having that one entrance there one-way and having the two going out on Free Street was more than adequate for that.
Again, my, my memory of viewing this hearing and Josh was there, that specifically is exactly what your consideration was.
I remember, I believe I said that.
The rear entrance is for service. There is a, two forms to the business. One is the retail sales, the other is wholesales where gas stations and car dealerships will come with small panel trucks, pick up multiple parts, and they will have an access from the rear of the building, and that's where that primarily access is. The, you know, Josh is very familiar with this store's type of traffic volume. It is minimal. It is not a high frequency user like a pharmacy or some other kind of, uh, retail store. They're very low impact in nature, and I believe your board considered that in its determination.
Okay, John?
Yeah. Well, first of all, let it be known that I'm a resident of Hamilton Street. I was not present at our meeting for this approval, but I did extend my feelings on the issue to, um, members of the board. At this point, I can only ask questions, I guess, and, um, go from there. If you could tell me, Attorney Antonellis, um, did this board stipulate that there should be no entrance or exit onto East Main Street, or was that just a part of the original plan?
I, I believe that that was a consideration, and the plan was submitted, there were multiple plans, but the plan, I believe Mr. Chairman Consigli initialed the plan at the hearing, was a plan that had no access onto East Main Street.
I, I recall there being some discussion of whether or not there should be something on East Main, and both this board and the planning board agreed that there should not be anything on East Main.
Okay, that, that brings up my next question. At the suggestion of the chairman, I drove around to several businesses around town. One example is the Plaza up on 140, just past Dairy Queen on the left. All right, it's across from the Alfonso Plaza. There are 14 businesses, 14 in this plaza. They have one means of entrance and exit, in other words, one curb cut, onto an extremely busy road, Route 140, where regular speed is much higher than it is on Main Street. So, you know, I, I can't understand why there was never access ingress or egress off and onto East Main Street. As a resident of that neighborhood, and again, I'm just relaying information from my experience. And again, I've addressed some of these questions with the chief of police. Hamilton Street is a one-way street. That does not mean that it stays a one-way street all the time. There are occasionally drivers that come from Route 85 who want to get to East Main Street, who drive up the one-way street to get to East Main Street to avoid the lights at Cedar Street or 85. My concern, my main concern with this business, or when the plan was proposed, was one main thing. If you are coming from Route 16 and 109, okay, and you are taking a right onto Hamilton Street, I felt that any type of opportunity that a customer of that business has of leaving there, instead of going down Hamilton and all the ways around through the neighborhoods or to 85, the easiest thing, and I think you will agree with me and say, you know that it will happen, is that they will take a quick right to jump out onto East Main Street. So if you are coming from 16 and 109 and you're taking a right onto Hamilton Street because of the car dealership there with cars parked right to the edge of the corner, you are blinded taking a right onto Hamilton Street. If cars are coming out, which they occasionally do now, I feel that that would only be increased if people have the opportunity to leave the business on the Hamilton Street side. You follow me? Yes, no?
Yes, no, I do. But I presume that's why the prohibition had been placed for leaving that, to leave it on Hamilton Street.
Right, and that's why I'm, I'm just putting my thoughts out there.
I believe that it's designed to prohibit right-hand turns.
That's correct.
That the, the, the configuration of the turn is such that when you get there, you can't really take a right back out.
Talking the one behind the?
Correct. The Hamilton Street entrance, exit, entrance in the left is designed to, to negate the attempt to leave that way. Because of the way it's configured. And Josh, you can help me with that, but I believe that that's how it's laid out.
It's lined up so that it's on the, um, it's on the entrance only, so that the traffic flow are heading that way.
So it's marked, it's almost.
Yeah, I hope when they did the parking, it would...
Tell me this, Josh, if, if there's a curb cut going in from Hamilton Street, would that curb cut be so, so that it would be impossible? Well, I guess nothing's impossible.
It's set up to...
But the curb cut would be this way, a left-handed curb cut, so that entrance can be gained and exit on that side would be discouraged?
Correct.
Okay.
And just a, just a, just a reminder, just a reminder, we're, we're dealing with the appeal. We can't amend anything and we can't change anything unless...
I'm just looking for clarification.
No, that's fine, but, but I just want to let you know.
Kind of something like that.
That's exactly what I'm talking about.
Yeah, so you, so you, so it would be, it would be, you'd have to, you'd have to take your tires over that curb in order to go left-hand side.
That's the question I'm asking.
That's the reason why we did that.
To negate that opportunity.
Dave, you all set? Ken? Or John, if you still want to?
I'm all set. I'm good, as long as the curb's that way.
You all set?
Yeah, I'm, I'm all set.
Set for now? Why not? Give them a microphone.
I will.
Joe Caligoni, member of the planning board? Thanks for coming, thanks for coming, Joe.
I have a question first. Are you talking about the rear of the building and having just an entrance? And I understand what you're talking about, making the, the entrance such that it can only come down Hamilton Street. The same thing could be done as far as the egress goes also, could it? In other words, if you came out, I'm just guessing, if you came out onto Hamilton Street, the egress would be designed such that you can only go basically one way. There's a similar situation.
Decision's already been done.
Yeah, there's a similar situation if you go up to Plaza where, uh, who dropped Tony there is, and the bank is. And you come out of there, you cannot go left up 140, you have to go right.
Your, your, your point is correct. Your point is correct, Mr. Evans. To the extent that the board would have allowed a left-hand turn onto Hamilton or an exit onto Hamilton Street, that exit could have been designed to prohibit a right-hand turn.
Right, it could have been, yes.
Not to use anybody's name in vain here, but we would have called that a pork chop island.
Right. All right, go ahead, go ahead, Joe.
As we said in the letter that was sent to you, Mr. Chairman, the planning board was significantly concerned, and in our case, the overriding concern was safety. We had two main issues, were safety and traffic. We believe the safety is of paramount concern. Free Street and Hamilton Street are almost exactly the same width. I believe Free Street is one foot wider. However, the forced movements actually force you, because you've got two-way traffic on that street, the movements through Free Street are actually much worse. If you take turning movements in there, it's almost impossible for people to get in and get out if there's two cars there. And you're forcing that movement all onto Free Street. So we were very concerned about exiting and entering, entrancing on Free Street. We were also concerned that that, if people, and as, paraphrase what we said in our letter, but that if people were heading to the north section of Milford and effectively wanted to get down to Cedar Street, Dill Street, that area, their option is to go out Free Street, down Free Street to Florence, back out to Hamilton Street, and back out to Cedar Street. So we're still putting that traffic on Hamilton Street. The other option to that, which we think is entirely against everything the town has tried to do, is to go back out Free Street, take a left onto East Main Street, and a left onto Hamilton Street, which is a killer. Traffic on, on East Main Street, as you all are aware, is not great during rush hours during the day, and to push more traffic out onto East Main Street, which is one of the reasons, when we've discussed the site before, the planning board is adversely affecting, was adversely against putting any additional driveways on East Main Street. To the intent that we could get traffic off of East Main Street or driveways off of East Main Street has certainly been a goal of the planning boards since I've been on the board. Anything that we can do to try to help traffic on East Main Street, knowing that we don't see relief to East Main Street in the foreseeable future, was something that we've tried to do. So we were significantly concerned about that and what that does to us. I, as you said, the police department memo came out today, and I'd like to just address a few issues. Obviously, this is, this is more personal at this point. The board members haven't seen this, but I know we have spoken about a number of these issues. The chief is right, Hamilton Street's a one-way street. North, northerly Hamilton Street is narrow, but I'd like to add that Free Street is no wider, and that's where the traffic's going. There's never been any intent to put any driveway on East Main Street, so the mention of that, that didn't come before us. I know conversations that, I'm not sure whether this applicant did or previous applicants that have come before us, the staff, planning and engineering department has told applicants that that wasn't something that they wanted to do. Hamilton Street could serve as a cut-through. It's tough for me to evaluate when people are doing things they're not supposed to do, and how you protect against that, I'm not sure. I can tell you right now that based on the design, if somebody wanted to take a right out of that back driveway and exit it, they can do that, and they can get out onto Hamilton Street, just like they can, just like they can avoid going out from Hamilton Street with the design that we had. If somebody's going to do something illegally, I'm not sure that we're stopping them. Hamilton Street's a residential neighborhood. I don't know that I would classify Streets, Free Streets as anything other than that. I don't know that they're any different. So I don't know that that weighs, to me, in any different. I'd like, I don't think we should be impacting Free Street any more than Hamilton Street. So I'm not sure how we handle that. You know, again, there'll be a significant number of people traveling out. Again, that's an illegal move. We certainly wanted that to be signed. I don't know that we stop them by doing this or, or what we had. If people are going to do things that are legal, it's very difficult to evaluate that. But those are the main issues of the planning board, was the safety of Free Street, I believe the site distance, and what you need to realize, and I'm not sure how clear it is on here, but Hamilton Street is actually going to become, or at least viewed, much more narrowly than it is today. Because if you go to Hamilton Street now, there is no curbs on Hamilton Street. As part of this development, we are putting the curbs back in on, on the development side of Hamilton Street. So right now, where that is all pretty much level, that won't be the case. So the true width of Hamilton Street will be there, which I think would alleviate some of the concerns of people coming out and using that as a two-way, because it won't appear as wide as that anymore in the future. But that is going to exacerbate the, you know, the problems that you have in terms of, of access in, along Hamilton Street, because it will be narrower than it is, and it will show at the end that it's almost exactly the same size as Free Street. We wanted to impart the curbing, and that was, that was one of the things that the planning board put in as part of the process, because we felt it was important to delineate Hamilton Street and make sure that it was clearly visible as to what was the street portion and that portion that was part of the development. So those are the main issues that we had, and that's why we did not feel comfortable that we could approve it as shown, because we were significantly concerned about the safety and traffic impacts to the Free Street, Florence Street neighborhood.
Anybody have any questions for, for Joe?
Yeah. What did you see as the ultimate solution for these people?
We believe that Hamilton Street exit should be allowed so that they can exit onto Hamilton Street.
So they'd have to resubmit to you?
No, they have to. I think, I believe that would be the case. If you upheld our decision and felt that, that our safety concerns after discussing that were, that there was some safety concerns that the planning board had that perhaps you didn't consider when you made your decision, and that you upheld our decision, I would believe that they would have the option to resubmit to us, and then they would have to come back to you, well, they'd actually submit for a zoning. You'd have to come back to you and change the decision.
Frankly, they could have submitted something if they stuck within the parameters of the guidelines, and they would have never had to come to us to begin with.
That is correct.
If they stuck with their size, and they stuck with their overall original guidelines, they would have never been here.
We did have, just for the edification of the board, we have had other developments at the site that did not have to come to you, that we had gone through the process and approved.
With egresses on...
Egress on Hamilton Street, that is correct.
Yeah. The issue you were just finishing up with, didn't Jerry Moody address that as to how it would have to be handled, in other words, it would have to be...
Would you like me to read Jerry's letter?
No, I read it. I'm just clarifying the fact that the issue he was talking about, that Jerry addressed that issue as to how it would have to be handled.
Okay. All right, anybody else want to be heard on this matter? Okay. Any other comments for you, Joe?
Thank you, yes, just a few. Unique situation. I have dueling experts. It's like a trial where we have two really good experts. I practice before both of these boards on a regular basis. I practice before zoning boards and planning boards in many communities in this area. I think you all know that. I have the greatest deal of respect for both of these boards, and I really feel tonight that when I say to you, it's not as though you made a casual decision. You made a reasoned decision as to how you, as a board, believed this property was best designed. This was, and you know, Joe brought up a good point. There were other people who didn't come to this board because they had different sizes of buildings. This particular use, while it may have needed a variance because of the side of the build, size of the building and where to put it, in my opinion, is a more appropriate use for a very difficult piece of property because it's a low-intensity use. This is not going to get a lot of traffic, and I, and Joe makes a lot of good points. But the fact of the matter is, is that if you had left-hand turns and exits on both sides, okay, people are going to go out into Hamilton Street. You've made a decision that you don't think they should go that way. Yes, there will be more traffic on Free Street, but the number of cars that you're adding to Free Street may only be 10 or 12 over the course of a day, again, because this is a low-intensity user. And I'm certainly aware of the fact that Free Street is a residential street. As a lifelong resident, I know I live in Hope Dale, but I'm still a Milfordian. As a lifelong resident of Milford, spent a lot of time walking around those streets as a young guy, and I think we could all say that there's a lot of neighborhoods that we used to walk in that aren't as safe and are used to because of the traffic. That's part of what we have here in Milford. We have sections of Milford that are in our commercial and residential mixed areas that are literally a cityscape. We're not a little town anymore, and we're going to have issues like this at all times. And so what I, again, I feel comfortable about is, is saying to you as a board, don't put us through the process of coming back here and having you remove a restriction from this piece of property. Because the process will be, is if you agree that the planning board is correct and that you are incorrect, we will have to refile here at the zoning board. You will have to then make another finding about removing a restriction or imposing other restrictions. We'll then go back to the planning board, and maybe that will satisfy them. But what we're really talking about is whether or not your decision, whether you believed it was correct, because my client accepted it and says, I can run my business with the limited access, because my client knows better than all of us how many trips are going to come in and out of the day, out of that facility a day, and whether or not that facility as designed can satisfy its customers. We've made that decision, that it can, and we did it after this board imposed the condition. So I would ask that you uphold your decision and overturn the planning board, allow us to go forward. I appreciate the time and the effort that you've all put into it, and the planning board has put into it, and I respectfully, again, request that you uphold your earlier decision. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to, just to make a general comment, the reason that we, as a board, went down this road for the Hamilton Street side was, number one, the intensity use of the user of this piece of property is not that much. If you take a look at some of the other auto parts, you're talking about four or five cars. You're not talking about 20 or 30 cars. If this was a restaurant, trust me, the traffic coming out of there would be immense. So I think the decision, the reason the zoning board made the decision they made for the entrance-only egress to the rear of the property was because of a life safety issue only. No one wanted to take the chance of someone coming down that one-way street and something terrible happen. And I know, to this day, I cannot live with changing my decision concerning that street. So with that, we are being asked to do one or two things tonight. We cannot change the decisions we've already rendered. So the question's going to be, we're going to be requesting us to overturn the decision of the planning board, which means that our restrictions will stay in place, and if we do not, and we agree with the planning board's decision, then they'll come back, and the two egresses will be there, and the planning board, and it'll be on the direction of the planning board to be able to allow egress in and out of that site. So we, we can only make a decision tonight based on this appeal and the decisions that we've already made. Whatever decisions we have already made, I need a vote, and I'll start with...
You've got to close the hearing, right?
I've got to close the hearing, but I've got to give him his last sentence. But I'm going to start with the overture of the decision of the planning board, okay? So before I, before I close this hearing, I'm going to give Mr. Antonellis his last word.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I summarized the position. I truly believe that your original decision was based on a full and complete hearing of all of the merits, of all of the merits of the application, and that you made a reasoned decision as to what your board thought was best for the property. I'd ask that you uphold it.
Okay, thank you. So we're, we're going to close the hearing.
Mr. Chairman, can I just make one, one comment?
Right.
Because I'm...
Go ahead. Who are you?
You...
Out of respect.
Well, you mentioned a few times this particular use, but I guess I'm, what limits us to this particular use going forward?
Doesn't.
So I just wanted to bring that out, because...
It doesn't.
As long as it's commercial use in the future, we don't have a, we don't have any guarantee that this is the use, and that's one of the things the planning board tries to consider with all of these.
Okay. All right, the members of the board, is there a motion to overturn, overturn the decision of the planning board, which keeps our warrants in check of what we already gave as a decision?
I'll make a motion.
A motion by Mary, you have a second? Second by Dave?
To uphold our decision, correct? Yeah, I'll make a second, yeah.
A second. All those in favor?
I uphold that decision.
Opposed, that's unanimous.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the time.
All due respect, Joe. Thank you. With that, I believe we've concluded our business.
And I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. All those in favor, motion?
To adjourn.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for joining us at the zoning board tonight. Hopefully, it was a bit entertaining. Have a great night.